June 9, 2025, 6:00 PM, City Council Chambers, 111 East Maple. And the first item on the agenda is Independence Economic Development Partnership update. And Madam Deputy City Manager, if you could in fact frame the first topic, I would be delighted.
Well, the first topic is one of several group presentations that we have tonight, and I will certainly not do it as much justice as Doug Cowan, Dan, and Jarvis will. So if Doug Cowan, President and CEO of Community Service League, could come forward and kick this off for us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Pleasure to be here with you tonight. I'm appearing in front of you in my role as the 2025 Chair of the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce, and so I'm here representing our fellow board members. The Chamber of Commerce, as all of you know, has been in Independence for more than 100 years and currently enjoys more than 600 businesses in our community that work to move commerce and industry forward every day. But we are here tonight to give an update on the Independence Economic Development Partnership, which falls under the Chamber. And so as the Board Chair, I'm just going to give a couple of welcoming remarks. I also want to thank our Chair-elect Brett Coleman, who's here. Cindy Rogers is a Chamber Board Member. Dan O'Neal, who you'll be hearing from tonight, is a Board Member and chairs the Economic Development Partnership. Also Christina Lakey is a Board Member. So I would be remiss not to start with a thank you. I'm going to give a kind of a run-up here real quickly to the partnership. I want to thank the council for their continued vision and support. From the Chamber of Commerce's perspective, we have seen really great movement from the City Council and great leadership on really important work in our community. You had a vision to put in front of the voters, opportunities to invest in public safety, infrastructure, along with parks and historic sites. And as all of you know, the Chamber really carried the torch, if you will, for the campaign into the community. And while we certainly wish all three issues would have passed in front of the voters, we are absolutely thrilled that the infrastructure issue did pass. And obviously, as we all know, the Parks and Historic Site was super close to passing and had more than a 55% margin of support. Infrastructure is clearly critical to economic development. It's critical to our community. So I want to thank you for doing that. But I also would be remiss not to encourage you to continue to think about those issues and how our community can move those forward. I also want to thank you for your vision, similarly around the fire stations and moving those important projects forward as those are critical, especially the development on the east side as it makes it responsive to new economic development opportunities. Would also like to thank the council for coming together on the Independence Convention and Visitors Bureau opportunity, moving tourism, which is one of our greatest assets in this community, forward. So for all those things, I want to say thank you. These are issues that sometimes in cities would have taken years and years and years to move forward. And this council has worked cohesively together, and so I want to say thank you. And it's really our pleasure also to interface with city staff. Our city manager is incredible to work with, the assistant city managers, and all of the folks that the Chamber interfaces with. So I want to say thank you for all of that and encourage you to keep it going because when we do these things, it creates a climate of economic development and opportunity. And people, developers and others that we hear from, they notice these things. They notice when cities move important things forward. They notice when voters move important initiatives forward. And right now, as Jarvis and Dan will really elaborate, Independence is moving forward in a really, really important way. So it is simply my job to kick us off tonight. But just as a quick reminder that when the Independence Economic Development Council, as a corporation, folded and merged into the Chamber of Commerce, we created the Independence Economic Development Partnership, which is a public-private partnership. And we want to thank in a similar way the council for coming together and recently approving a contract with the Chamber of Commerce for economic development activities that could be up to as long as six years, so three years with three additional one-year renewals. We thank you for putting your trust in the Chamber of Commerce. And I think the report that you're going to hear tonight shows exciting opportunities in the businesses that we are retaining, that we are homegrowing, that we are investing to continue to grow, but also new development and opportunities in the city. So you're going to hear a little bit about activities, opportunities. We are going to highlight some of the challenges, bring these forward to you. Most of these are things that you're aware of, but it's important for us to talk about it and what we can do together moving forward. We have an identified strategic plan, so you're going to hear some reports on that, and also key performance indicators. So that is my job, is to welcome you tonight. I now have 65 scouts who are loading up this evening for scout camp, which we leave for on Friday. So I'm going to turn it over to the Chair of the Independence Economic Development Partnership, Dan O'Neal, to take us the rest of the way. And I thank you for your time and continued partnership.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council and staff. We appreciate you. A brief look back at '24. In 2024, we had 24 successful projects that were completed, which entailed 244 new jobs created. That was about $137 million worth of private capital investment. So, and this is currently what we have in the works, so you can see the progress that we're making. Currently, we have Universal Health Services investing about $62 million in a new mental health facility, which is located out by Trinity Woods. And they're looking to approximately hire 200 healthcare workers. Center Point, of course, is investing over $50 million in upgrades to the existing hospital and also the new ER center, which is going to be located at 23rd and Lee Summit Road. I don't know if you've driven by there recently, but they're making really good progress with that building. It's already up. East Gate continues to prepare land for future development projects. We're looking at, currently in redevelopment for Nolan Fashion Square. Metro East Commerce Center is now shovel-ready for AMR facilities under construction. And of course, we're all familiar with what's going on with the Independence Square streetscape. We currently have 52 projects that are in current active status, which amounts to about 5,594 potential new jobs for our community. Also, it represents a really large potential capital investment of $16.3 billion as compared to, if you look at the number from last year, what our total process was and look at our possibility for this year, that'll knock your socks off almost. Anyway, these projects include advanced manufacturing projects. Data centers have emerged as the most active project that's happening in that sector. We're currently involved in, we independents are currently involved as finalists for three different projects being led by national site selectors. Some of the challenges that we're facing currently are retail, of course, everybody knows. Retail is consolidating and shrinking down from their previous brick-and-mortar operations to be replaced by drop-ship distribution centers. I don't know if you've noticed or not, but we all have a lot of Amazon trucks running around in our neighborhoods recently. So, and that's part of that process. A significant portion of our citizens who are employable lack the necessary skills for these in-demand jobs. So that's one of the challenges that we are facing. We need to prepare our citizens for that type of employment. Doug briefly mentioned some of the problems we're having with utilities. Our current existing structure doesn't really, it presents some limitations for our development. So however, Independence Power Light has assured me and others that they're up to that challenge and that we'll get there eventually. Power availability and capacity has become a limiting factor. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jarvis Sackman. He's going to take over the presentation. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mayor Rowland and City Council. How are you tonight?
Great, thank you.
Doing good, doing good. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you tonight on behalf of the Economic Development Partnership. To build on where Dan left off, I want to segue into the growing world of artificial intelligence and where market trends are headed. For starters, we know that AI is playing a key role in how site selectors are looking at potential investments and making market comparisons. Site selectors are also using AI to research and evaluate communities to save time and to get an in-depth look at workforce availability and quality of life and other opportunities for investment. Going forward, we should look at AI for new ways to position independents and to be competitive. We must embrace and engage this tool to tell our story and to make independence stand out as a place to do business. AI is transforming how communities are being evaluated for potential investments, and comparisons can be made of different but similar communities to uncover trends, forecast economic shifts, and assess the effects of local policies and incentive opportunities for investments. Three key points in using AI that we should all consider is... Right, there we go. Attracting investments. AI enables us to use predictive analytics and can help us to be proactive in pinpointing companies that would be a good fit for our community. Secondly, we can use AI to identify opportunities and discover emerging industry clusters, optimize our supply chains, and reveal our competitive advantages, which are crucial for positioning our community for future growth. AI can also be used in analyzing jobs that may be at risk due to automation. It can also recommend pathways for discovering transferable skills, retaining and upskilling to ensure our workforce is ready to meet demands and remain competitive. In conclusion, we plan to embrace AI as a tool that we can help evaluate our community's potential and foster a more attractive and resilient economy. And going forward, I think this is how we tell our story. A quick search using an AI platform reveals several positive aspects for doing business in Independence. We offer a very diverse economic base and a variety of other significant features that offer a good quality of life, central location, and an engaged city government that is willing to make investments in the future of our city. To dive a little deeper into this slide, we're talking about key sectors like healthcare, education, manufacturing, and hospitality. Our focus on this variety of industry is a significant asset that adds to our story and positions us well for future growth. Again, our central location, along with our proximity to Kansas City, creates unique opportunities for business and investment. I think it's also important to mention the $1 billion investment made for the East Gate Commerce Center. This is a clear indication of the commitment of the future of this community. We also, excuse me, we've also seen significant public investments in a wide range of economic development incentives, which contribute to making Independence an attractive destination as well. Lastly, on this slide, I'd like to mention that affordable cost of living, combined with an attractive revitalization effort in a pro-business environment, thus supports a favorable tax structure, all of which create a solid foundation for growth. All combined, these strengths are crucial as our partnership navigates the future economic landscape in Independence. Comparatively, another quick AI search can reveal areas of opportunity that we must also consider. As I go through these opportunities, I think it's important to mention that we're not alone in these areas. Neighborhood communities in our region deal with very similar stories. Even with the diversity of growth mentioned in the last slide, we have opportunities to improve with respect to industry clusters, capital for business startups, and I would also like to add our growing need for power generation. Lack of growth in these areas can be limiting to our economic growth potential and our competitive advantage. The second area that we need to consider is that a significant portion of adults in our region lack the skills required for in-demand jobs. This is a critical issue that we must address to enforce our workforce is prepared for the future. And at a recent conference I attended discussing the topic of AI in the workplace, a study that stunned me by the World Economic Forum suggests that by 2030, 140 million jobs will be eliminated worldwide. But retrospectively, there will be replaced by 150 million new jobs, requiring advancement in skill sets and training. So we have to ramp up to meet those demands. Lastly, we need to confront the perception that our local job market isn't as robust as in other nearby cities. With a potential for new developments, business expansion, and emphasis on transferable skills, this viewpoint can be changed for our city. Telling our story of not only our rich history, but of growth and the potential that we offer can help to influence future investments, increase property values, and enhance skills training. With the number of potential significant projects that we have in the queue, opportunities truly abound. I will add that one recent project submission has the potential of bringing 8,000 new jobs to the area, and that will transform a community. I feel this is an exciting time in Independence, and we are on the verge of a breakout. East Gate gives us great flexibility and offers many scenarios for an array of opportunities. Another example of our expansion is in the field of healthcare as well. By understanding and leaning into these opportunities, we can strategize effectively and work towards enhancing our community's economic landscape, strengthening our brand, and changing many of these limiting factors and opinions. Next slide outlines our 2025 strategic plan focusing on three key areas, which are business retention, business attraction, and marketing and communications. The first area, business retention. Our goal is to meet with 150 or more local businesses this year. Thus far, nearly 50 businesses have been engaged through introductory and business retention visits. Areas of opportunity and benefits of doing business in Independence are key points of the conversations. The initiative of this program reinforces our commitment to being a go-to resource for businesses in Independence. I would also like to add that 90% of job creation comes from within our existing businesses. So nurturing these relationships and encouraging a shop-local message is a crucial aspect of our growth. Next, we aim to bolster our business attraction efforts. We will respond promptly to requests for information from KCADC and the Missouri Partnership, Kansas City Area Development Council, is what KCADC is, and the Missouri Partnership, ensuring that we are proactive in our outreach. The process for completing an RFI promptly is a collaborative effort between the Economic Development Partnership, city officials, and utility and development partners to ensure accurate, reliable, and complete information is provided in a timely manner. Our participation in out-of-market marketing trips will also be key in attracting new businesses to our region, as well as proactively soliciting businesses within the Kansas City area to consider Independence as a future home. Finally, effective marketing and communication are vital for our success. We plan to host a familiarity tour for regional commercial real estate brokers and a CEO roundtable connect business leaders with local officials. And to amplify our message, we've contracted with ByGeorge PR to focus on sharing our story and to communicate our many successes. Together, these three strategies combine to help tell our story, strengthen and create a thriving local economy, and position Independence as a growing hub for industry and a vibrant place to raise a family. As we look to our key performance indicators, it's important to understand that measuring success in economic development is a long-term game. We look at big-picture data to gauge our progress toward growth. The three main areas of focus include commercial property vacancies, a measure that helps us assess the demand for space, and the overall attractiveness of our market. Our second area of focus is on building permits issued and their value. An increase here signals property investments and development within our community. And finally, employment levels. Tracking job growth is crucial. It shows the health of our local economy and the opportunities available to our many residents. By monitoring these indicators, we can better understand where we are and what adjustments we need to make. And we are committed to ensuring that our economic growth is not merely a number, but a reflection of improved opportunities for everyone in our community. On Slide 14, we focus on commercial vacancies. This information provides valuable insights into the health of our commercial real estate markets. We use data from the CoStar Commercial Real Estate Database to show trends and to follow the market. For the first quarter of 2025, we see a commercial vacancy rate of 6.9% to 10.6% across the various categories. Generally speaking, a rate of 5% to 8% is considered healthy and indicates a strong market. The data also shows while we have areas of strength, we also have opportunities for improvement in the sectors of retail and office. It's also worth noting that buildings in East Gate have added over 500,000 square feet of space to our inventory. This type of growth can have a positive impact on our overall commercial vacancies, potentially making it easier for businesses to find suitable shovel-ready locations. As we move forward, understanding these trends will help shape our strategies for business retention and attraction, and to rethink our focus on more creative uses for our retail and office space vacancies. In keeping these figures in mind, let's move on to the next slide focusing on total employment. The employment numbers provide a clear picture of our overall economic environment. The year-to-date total is slightly down from 2024, but remains steady within the prior years. This number reflects the vitality of our local economy and is one of the key indicators we use to assess our economic health. A few of the largest industry employers in Independence are healthcare and social assistance, retail trade, and manufacturing. It's important to note this information comes from the Missouri Economic Research and Information Center, which ensures we are relying on credible state resources for this information. Again, understanding these trends helps us gauge the effectiveness of our overall economic development strategies and a continuing focus on available jobs and workforce development. In the final slide, we will look at the building permit data, which provides further insights into our growth trajectory. The building permit information allows us to track investments being made in our community in the form of property improvements and new construction. In 2024, we had a valuation in commercial building permits of nearly $163 million. A few of the projects that contributed this total are a $4 million commercial tenant finish at Walmart, a $4.3 million new construction project for the 54th Street Drafthouse, an $8.5 million addition to Paul Kinder Middle School, and a $6.6 million tenant finish at Mother's Refuge, and that is to name a few. There are many other projects in that list. These numbers represent capital investments, growth opportunities, and healthy development in our community. Three key attributes of this report to keep in mind: An increase in building permits indicates confidence in our market. Secondly, the trend of increasing investment illustrates a commitment to enhancing our infrastructure and economic landscape. And one final aspect to consider: Each new project contributes to job creation and community revitalization, enhancing the perception of our community impacting the lives of our many residents. In summary, the building permit numbers track the growth of investments being made in Independence. These numbers can help measure trends in development and the real estate markets and can offer solutions on how we market new and existing properties which are currently available. And with that, I would like to conclude our update with a story of a recent new startup business that I had the opportunity to meet with. It was a young lady not far from here that was opening a business, basically an adult daycare. It started on a dream and a promise that she made to her mother before she passed away. She always spent time with her mother, and she wanted to make sure that other people had someone in their life like her to spend time with and not just to be sitting home alone watching TV. So she started this, basically an adult daycare, community to bring folks in that are in need of those services, in need of driving services for groceries and what-have-you shopping, and just to have community, to play games and to participate in activities and just to have that sense of belonging to a group. Like I said, she's a recent startup. She's in the process, if not already there, and getting her license, all taken care of. She should be up and running and open for business. I reached out to her, but I left a voicemail. But that's what makes me come to work every day. That's why we do what we do. It's the little projects like that. Yes, we'd love to hit a home run and hit something big out of the park at East Gate, but it's the little people, the little projects. I say the little people, I'm the little people as well. But the little projects in this town that keep us going. And we got to remember that 90% of those new jobs created are from expanding business within our community. So I appreciate this opportunity, and I thank you for your time tonight. I know that was kind of a long-winded summary, but I really appreciate the opportunity for me to share tonight, for Dan and I and Doug to share tonight. So if there are any questions, Dan and I'd love to...
Well, great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman O'Neal. Thank you. And I want to say just really appreciate it. Just see if there's any questions from our councilmembers. I know we've got three councilmembers online, so to be respectful of those folks, to make sure they have the opportunity, and we'll certainly keep the lines open for them. But any questions here, please?
Thank you for that presentation. So I just have one question. On the 52 projects that are currently in active status, what does "active" mean?
Active means they are not complete yet.
I mean, are they different stages of that?
There are different stages, yes. So they are active. Some of those on that list, I've added some today, and I've taken some off. So that was last quarter, basically. But some of those projects are still in the stage of being completed. Getting updates from some of those project managers, if you will, just to find out what updates are and how to kind of track those and keep a running total on what is current and what is completed. I like to get things in the completed pile and get those numbers updated and then put new projects in the queue to keep those numbers current. The 8,000 jobs, I was amazed when I saw that request come through. It's a $2.4 billion project that could really, really impact our community. And when I added those totals to the project update report this morning, the employment numbers went above 13,000. And that just really, it really gave me a lot of hope. And I mean, we'll see what happens. But I really, I think that, like I said earlier, we're on the verge of a big win. And I think East Gate is going to be there to help us through. But to circle back around, those are projects that are still in process of being completed for some reason or another. And on that building permit report, thankfully, that information is on the bottom of that report as well. And I'm able to update from that report that they've either been completed or whether those projects are in the permit process or what stage of that they're in.
Okay, thank you.
Hope that answers that.
Thank you. Anyone online want to ask a question? Any councilmembers online want to ask a question? Please proceed.
Are you talking to me?
Yes, Councilmember McCandless, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Because there's three of us, so I didn't want to step on anyone. Jarvis, first, welcome to your position. I know you've not been in it for a long time. I appreciate that you have hit the ground running.
Thank you.
We are soon to welcome our new Director of the Chamber, who will be coming in a few weeks, so we will be delighted to bring her on board. I think sometimes for the average person who is watching this and they listen to the breadth of opportunities we have, it's important to say that these are long love affairs to be able to get someone to come here. Can you give just a sense of how many months it may take to be able to cultivate a relationship before that business actually sets root in Independence?
Perfect, thank you. I appreciate that question. As I was looking at that list today of active projects, I noticed some of them dating clear back to 2022. Some of those are still in process. And quite frankly, there was another project that we were very excited about that was supposed to announce about a month ago or a little less than a month ago, but we're still waiting. So I'm waiting on updates for those projects. So yes, they are a long-range plan. Economic development is not the short game. It is definitely a long game, and it could take a couple of years to... It is definitely a long game, and it could take a couple of years to get some of these together. I know the projects that come in, they are, they're staged projects to be completed by 2028, 2029, several years down the road. So it is definitely a process. Things have to be put in place, infrastructure, workforce. There's a lot of things that I'm learning that come with this area of economic development. It's basically the backbone and the spine, and there are a lot of nerve endings that go out throughout that affect, that the spine affects. And, you know, like I said, workforce and just so many other little nuances that go along with each project. But yeah, it can be a long, it can be a long-term game. And there are several projects that I looked at, and I just wonder, you know, that's, again, that's new to me. These projects, the tracking method that we have is very detailed, and it's still very new to me, but digging into that and finding out who some of these contacts are and following up and seeing what progress they're in, that's my goal, and that's kind of my, I like to get things completed, and I like to see it done and onto the next. So that is a focus that I will be, I will be taking on with Tom's departure.
Fantastic. Sometimes when I talk to people about growth, they are not excited. They're like, "Well, that's going to be more traffic," or "That's going to mean a little bit longer wait when I go to get gas." But it's important for our residents to realize attracting new jobs means that you're revitalizing neighborhoods, you have someone who wants to buy the house that you want to sell, it increases our tax base, it's people who will occupy the apartments that we've recently built, and it means that your grocery store is more likely to survive because you have more people who are participating in the retail life of the community. But it takes a lot of work to get there, and some of these, I know, are really stretch opportunities for Independence. I'm just so proud of the development partnership to go after some of these, which we would have never even considered five years ago. But I also just, a tip of the hat because the reputation of Independence outside of our community is improving dramatically as a place to come and do business. So just want to say thank you to you and the Chamber and really the kind of the forward-thinking work it takes to get us to this position. So my appreciation.
Thank you, Bridget. I really do appreciate that. I tell you, I know I've only been in this a very short time, but I love what I do. I enjoy the work that I'm doing. It's fulfilling. And in my previous experience, I worked at a nonprofit that helped folks that were homeless, and I always wanted to be, do more for the community. And I think that the opportunity to help more people, more nonprofits in this area, more people that need help, yes, we were doing a great thing at my previous employer, but to help even more people, I think that's huge. And to present those opportunities, the higher-paying jobs, I think that's all exciting. I think perceptions that I mentioned in my report there, that we need to change that perception, and I think it's just going to take telling over and over and over a good story about Independence and being, buying into Independence. I grew up here, I've been a part of Independence since I was born, and it's just an amazing community, great history, but we have to lean on more than our history. We have to lean on the future and what we have going forward. And I think that traffic, waiting in line at the grocery store, I think that's all a small price to pay for growth. And I think that if we want to, we want to make Independence the next big town down the road, we've got to, we've got to take these steps. And if we want to play in the game, we've got to take these steps, and we've got to be proactive in what we do. We've got to reach out to businesses that are outside of our area, and we've got to find ways that maybe we can bring them into our community. And if nothing else, just be that voice that reached out and said, "We would love to have you in Independence, please consider us for a new home." I did that with one particular business, and the amount of times I was told, "Thank you for reaching out and calling," that it really hit home with me that there are probably more businesses out there that maybe are not as established that will, that can make Independence a really, really nice place. And there's an example not far from here, a clock shop that I can't wait to go visit that Cindy Rogers sent me information on when I was at my conference. And I can't wait to go talk to those folks and just see, you know, why, why they came here, what made them want to come to Independence. I mean, I'm a very curious guy by nature, and asking questions about that is key for me. And just being able to share that with other businesses and leaders in the community, I'm really looking forward to what we have going. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else have other further questions? Please proceed.
Thank you, Jarvis. I had the pleasure of talking with you on several different occasions, and one of the occasions, we were trying to brainstorm to see how can we capitalize on some of the discussions and problems that the crossroads were having, and how can we be ready, not necessarily for this situation, but in the future situations, to be ready to reach out to other communities and bring them in here. So thank you for that conversation.
Absolutely. I think that's a great, yeah, that's a great plan, and AI can help us to pick those businesses that are kind of similar, that may fit our community.
Sure. So here's a question. So as we're walking through and working with the partnership, when a business comes to you as the partnership, how do you handle that, and how do you work to develop that relationship and land that business here? We've talked about the potential 8,000 new jobs in some of those businesses. So from start to finish, how does that look in the partnership?
I tell you, John, that's a trick question for me, because I've only had a couple of businesses actually reach out, looking to start a business. And on the two occasions, it was a relatively small business, and it was an innovation center type of question. But to start that conversation, I think, I think we have to be proactive in reaching out, and to do those searches ahead of time. I mean, I was watching the news the other night, and I heard of another business down in that same area that's having struggles. And just reaching out to those folks and letting them know that basically we're open for business in Independence, we have a police force that's ready to respond, and we don't mess around with things like that. So I think it's important to reach out and to foster those relationships. As far as location, finding a location using our resources, our CoStar, our real estate app, to find locations and to maybe breathe new life into the retail and the office spaces set vacant. There's a lot of office space around town, there's a lot of retail, as Dan alluded to, that's kind of, the brick and mortar's kind of gone away, but those spaces are still available. So finding opportunities where opportunity might be waiting is key, I think, and just, you know, getting, getting in the position to where we are being proactive in reaching out. And, you know, taken from city council and any kind of, any kind of information that I can get to help me out in reaching out to those folks or a contact, I'm all in, and I'm not afraid to pick up the phone and make that call or making that visit down to that business. But I met with another local business here on the square who moved from down in the area downtown and down Westport, and, you know, they were very impressed, the owner was very impressed with the engagement from the city. He said, "I've met the mayor a couple of times. I've never met the mayor in, I mean, where I was at in my previous location." So city council engagement and a willing city government that's willing to help and put places, things in place, incentives, whatever that looks like, in place to invite businesses in. I think I'm willing to not take that on myself, but to engage the city and to engage the resources that we need to bring those businesses in and to make sure that it's a good fit for Independence and a good fit for that business.
Sure.
I don't know that that really answered your question, but, I mean, it kind of gives, it gave me a thought process to what that's going to look like.
Sure. Well, I understand you're very new to the position you're in, so I know you've hit the ground running and you're doing a hell of a job on that.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
During the presentation, there was a lot of projects, a lot of data that was put there. But I'm really curious, what specifically did the partnership use? Tools do they use to work with Mother's Refuge and/or 54th Street?
You know, and some of those, and I'll be honest, on those projects I get from the building permit report, I may not have a lot of information on those, but there are significant projects that need to be put on the update list. So I, just as of recently, have started updating that list with those projects, and if there's an opportunity for me to help with that project, I'm willing to make those connections. As far as, you know, being proactive, I want to be proactive in that, but I also want to stay out of the way and let things happen as well, as far as, you know, let any steps they've got in place, let those happen organically, and just be a presence and be there if helps needed. There were a couple of businesses that I stopped into in my visits throughout town, and one particular was local, local business. I mean, I'd been there for, taken my car there for service 30 years ago, but they've still been around doing business and sold a couple of different times, but they were having some city issues with codes and what have you, code violations, what have you. So I was able to, you know, not really wave a magic wand and make all that go away, but to help them work through that process along with the city and get them connected to the right people to make that a more painless process, rather than just being told, "You're going to change this, and that's how it is." I think that even though, you know, the city got what they wanted as far as the property looking the way it needs to look and setting an example for other owners, property owners, but I think the property owner as well after my follow-up call was helpful, was appreciative, and just making that connection and stopping in and rekindling that relationship, I think is very important. And that's basically my background is forever, it's just been customer service and just people, connecting people and making things work. So kind of a long way around, maybe not answering that question, but hey, I am, like I said, I'm very new, I hit the ground running, I love, every day it's something new. I learn something new in this job, and I've been to three different conferences so far since January, and I'm telling you what, every one of them is new connections, it's new insight, and it's new, it's just new ideas that come back with me. So I can't wait for our new CEO and Director to come on and to kind of share in that, the projects and what have you, but I will say that last week I had two new projects come in that I had never done anything, I mean, never worked on an RFI before, never seen one, I mean, as far as worked through one, but it was, it was an engaging process, but it was very, a very good tool that helped me connect with resources in the community to answer questions correctly and promptly, and to submit that project on time, before schedule, actually, and to have a chance at winning that project. So there's been a couple of them come through that I'm glad to have been a part of.
Just so I don't misunderstand, you've never done an RFI before?
I have not, I'll be quite honest with you, John.
All right. Well...
Councilmember Perkins, I'm sorry, but yes.
No, it's quite okay.
I can't say that now, I've done two.
Perfect. So you're learning.
I have done two, and I'm going to tell you what, the first one I thought was tough, but the second one was even a lot tougher. And luckily, I had a week to get it finished, and it was, it created a great database of information for me, and it gave me some phone numbers and some people to connect with, and I know where to go for future projects. And I tell you what, I'm kind of, as I look at those projects, I think when the new Director comes in, that's going to be, the attraction process is going to be kind of that role. And even with two under my belt, I'm going to want to be doing some more of those, just because I like the idea of, you learn so much about the community by filling in the details and working with folks in the community, and I really relish that, that opportunity.
Well, we appreciate what you're doing, so...
Hey, thank you, John.
Keep the work going.
I appreciate you all very much. Thank you all for meeting with me and just helping me work through this process, so thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Second thing on the agenda is workers' compensation insurance, and please proceed.
I'd like to ask Director of Finance Melissa Cabrera to come forward.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So next week, you will be presented with the city's annual property and excess workers' compensation policy renewals. This year, there is a fairly significant change centered around the city's self-insured retention amount, and so staff felt that it would be a good opportunity for the city's risk management and insurance consultant, Bob Charlesworth, to come in and walk us through that change and what the why, the what and the why of it. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bob.
Good evening. My name is Bob Charlesworth, Vice President of Charlesworth Consulting. I'm an independent risk management consultant, office at 1828 South Walnut in Kansas City, Missouri. What we're going to go through tonight is kind of a high-level look on the city's workers' compensation program, specifically the protections of being self-funded. Just quick overview, wanted to touch base on, so everybody who had a benchmark here. Workers' compensation is a statutory benefit. Every state is different. Essentially, it's unlimited medical for an injury sustained while you're working within your scope of duties for your employer, in this case, the city. Medical exams, hospital care, evaluations, vocational testing, et cetera, that's all paid for under the workers' compensation program. Loss of income, if you can't work, there are stipulations as to the length of time you're disabled, being retroactive date to where you're getting paid for your time off. The city has some assistance of making the individual whole. It goes for temporary total disability, partial disability. The city has a very robust light-duty return-to-work program, so if people are injured, if they can do something, it's best to get them back into the office and back into their duty at some level, that way they're not sitting at home watching TV. So very important on anything regarding disability. There are settlements on disabilities based on range of motion, loss of use, et cetera. That's where a lot of the questions come into play when people may have a disagreement with what's being offered for settlement. But we're, the city uses a very competent third-party administrator, and we also have a very aggressive and competent nurse triage program. So when people are originally injured, they're addressed immediately. So 24 hours doesn't matter. And of course, on benefits, there are survival benefits, if somebody be killed in the line of duty, there are specific benefits available to those families. Again, that's all based on statute, Missouri statute. Right now, the city has a program with Safety National Insurance Company, very good insurance company, and what happens is the city budgets program for obviously the nurse triage, the third-party claims administrator, and we also have to purchase what we call stop-loss insurance or excess workers' compensation insurance. And over the years, that amount the city takes, we call it a retention, think of it as a deductible like on your home, if you have a loss there. The city's retention is currently $1.5 million per accident, and that's whether it's one individual or multiple individuals in one accident. So if you have a group of firefighters that go through a roof, there's five of them involved, one SIR is involved collectively. Safety National issued a non-renewal notice, and it wasn't, they were mad at the city, it's just that they say based on their book of business, their experience on programs like this, the retention was going to go to a $2 million minimum self-insured retention. Well, the interesting part about that, we didn't have approval from the state of Missouri to do that yet. So we immediately got with city management, I got with the State Department of Labor to begin those discussions in May, I'm going to get the date wrong, I had it written down. They did issue a formal approval to the city to go up to a $2 million self-insured retention level, which was, at least gave us, it was on May 7th, to at least give us the opportunity to see what was available out there. The city uses Lockton Companies, a very large, probably the largest family-owned brokerage firm in the world, located here in Kansas City, to market the program, and in a minute I'm going to show you the declarations, but these are the two proposals that we got that were of great interest to consider. As you can see, Safety National came back, our expiring premium, our being the city's, the 1.5 million, they wanted 400, it's currently $460,000. They were going to move the city to a $2 million self-insured retention for essentially the same money, so a half a million dollar more retention for the same premium. They also offered a 2.5 million self-insured retention, but again, the state was not approving that at this point. We received other quotes, the other one to consider was from Midwestern Plores Casualty. Midwest Plores was an excess carrier for the city for several years, many years ago. They wanted to be back with the city again. They came back with a $2 million self-insured retention for $410,000, obviously compared to the 455, much better. However, they're also willing to give us something else to look at. to give us something else to look at. To remain at one point five million dollar for everybody except three class codes, that would be fire, police, and those in independence, power and light. Now, that's not the clerical, that is the, the workers out there that are out about. So those three class codes that have a two million dollar self-insured retention. So technically, much lower for everybody else, higher for those three class codes. And the premium for that was four fifty-two, two fifty, as you can see about the Simmons' expiring premium. The, the best part of it, I thought, they're going to guarantee the rate for two years. So we don't have to worry about the rate fluctuating or changing on us for another year. I thought that was a very welcome and aggressive proposal for the city's consideration. Just as an FYI, carriers that were, that declined or gave us options, AIG, actually used to be a carrier for the city. I did some help for the city, probably, I'm going to date myself, probably eighteen, twenty years ago. They were on board. Chubb, they couldn't get other reinsurance to fill it, Munich Re, et cetera. One of the things that we always have the option for, since it's a statutory benefit, the state has to give you, the city, the option to buy it, a fully insured program. Travelers is the carrier right now. If you, it's zero deductible, there's very little you can do regarding that. They gave us the summary and, and if you hold your horses, it was eight point seven million dollars in premium. And that's what you have to pay for the year going forward and still have to pay for the claims that you were self-insured for, paying claims down the road. So obviously, that's our worst-case scenario. We didn't want to go down that path. I did look at Missouri Employers Mutual, MEM. They're the largest workers' comp carrier in the state of Missouri. The max quote they have is a hundred thousand dollars and their premium said they just would prefer not to give you the premium because they think you ought to be self-insured based on city size. So a little note there, like I just mentioned a minute ago, should the city move to a fully insured program, whether it be through Missouri Employers Mutual or through the assigned risk, which again is Travelers right now. Workers' Comp is an occurrence program, so the year of which that claim is incurred, something happened, were injured, that is when the policy would apply. Now, workers' compensation is unique, is that sometimes it's kind of like health insurance a little bit. You can have an issue today and you won't get the bill for another month. Kind of the same thing with the workers' comp. You can have an issue and it would still linger and care over several months. Well, you're still responsible for those claims regardless of when they're paid. In fact, we have claims going back to two thousand and seven that we're still paying on as a city. So things linger based on severity, et cetera, and how the settlements are made. So you, you have to continue to pay that and you have to budget for that. And so trying to get a fully insured program plus paying the runoff, budget-wise is, and based on the city's claims experience, it's just unfeasible. So, and then one final thing, if an insurer handles it, they handle everything about all new claims. You don't get the nurse triage. You do get claim handling from the carrier, but it's who they assign. Right now, we have a team that's assigned for the city and so it works very well on that piece of it. The excess carrier through Lockton gave us this little slide. We shared this with management. Over the years, you can see the self-insured retentions since twenty sixteen for the city and the annual premium, how much they've gone up. And this is, this is not just the city of independents, this is municipals all over the country. Our firm represents some very large municipalities locally and several in Texas. The premiums are not unheard of, what you're seeing here. You can see what the annual premium is, what the premium the city has paid over those years versus what was paid out by the excess carrier over those same years. Now, there's a lot of zeros in there. Obviously, you can skew this and say, well, what if we did it from twenty seventeen forward? It would look a lot better. So you have to kind of play with the numbers which they give you. But, you know, they're not making money on the city, I'll put it that way. But they're still interested in writing the city, obviously, because claims are passed. They're wanting to make their money back up. So that's why they proposed another alternative for us. This is small, I realize that. Hopefully you can print it up and see it a little bit better, see the optional quotes available to the city. You can see the renewal option quotes from Safety National, the two and two and a half million, the premiums are already relayed to you. The quote from Midwest Employers regarding the two million and then the one that we're recommending, the one point five million for everybody except for police, fire, and those in IPL with a two-year rate guarantee. So that's the comparison of what they were able to receive. Just as an FYI, we did get a separate quote. This is, I didn't include it in here because it's extremely tough to explain on paper. But we did get a separate quote to fund the gap of the one point five million to two million. So we would take the two million dollar self-insured retention, but we could buy an insurance policy that says, no, it's only a million and a half. Well, that's two hundred thousand dollars in premium. I'm going two hundred grand for five hundred grand, that may not ever happen. That doesn't look like a really good return on investment. So, and that would have to be paid for every year going forward as well. So we did not include that. We didn't think it was a feasible alternative. Bottom line, the renewal recommendation is the option B that we've outlined with Midwest Employers Casualty. This, they have the statutory workers' comp. There's two parts to workers' comp. Again, the disability, medical benefits, which is part A, statutory benefits. And then there's employers' liability, third-party action over, very rare claims. I've, this is my forty-first year of business, I've seen two, so they're pretty rare. But that's a two million limit. The self-insured retention, again, the one point five for the majority, two million for fire, police, and electric utility class codes. It's a two percent decrease of what the city's currently paying and a two-year rate guarantee. Now, remember, rate guarantee is not the same as premium guarantee. Based on city payroll is how the rate is adjusted. So if the payroll goes up, premium's going to go up, but the rate stays the same. Just an FYI, we've been working with city management and finance team of the city's council, working on a citywide safety program. We've got a couple of individuals, don't want to take them away from their current jobs because I think they're very valuable and they're, I pulled up LinkedIn information on the two, bright, very bright. But we're looking to, to use that as a catalyst to bring the entire team together for the city. We've had it as a city, it's kind of gone way by with a retirement, trying to bring it back now. And so I think we're getting the momentum to do that and it's necessary to do that. We do aggressive employee assistance. Sarah in our office with the nurse trio, she gets notified of all claims regardless of the time of day. But the triage nurse gets involved immediately, et cetera. So we want the best care for our employees as best we can. The excess carrier has some really good resources. Midwest Employers has a, a report that'll provide us as a city, great information to use. So we're going to tap that information as far as what can we do to help educate not only the citywide team, but any department that has unique issues. We want to be able to get that information to them and serve as a resource. And we can do that. And the return to work efforts have been fantastic. Your department directors and management team have been really good. Your employees have been really good about getting back to work, trying to get back to work full-time and full-capacity. And that's really is what's going to save the city in the long run. That's really all I had. The, a couple of quick notes, just as an FYI. The city's budget, which obviously you all are tuned in on, the city budget's about three point three million dollars in workers' comp claims a year. So that's about, I've done, I'm a nerd, I'm a math nerd. That's about a five-year average. If you look at the median, if you take out some bad years, it's actually only two hundred, two point five million. So the most common is the lower number. But the city and with legal and with the third-party claims administrator, we've been pretty aggressive at trying to get older claims settled and off the books. That impacts the actuarial information that we provide the city as well. Just as an FYI, we have, the city has about a hundred and fifty claims a year. And I'm trying to think if there's anything really, there's currently about a hundred and thirty open claims and that goes back to, let me think, two thousand and five. There's one in two thousand and five, there's one in two thousand and nine, there's two in two thousand and eleven. So in other words, not a lot of them old. But they are out there and we're just slowly getting those cleaned up, make sure they're taken care of and off the books. So. Any other questions that I can answer for you today?
Very good. Any questions from any council members or any council members online?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'm not sure who to direct the question to, but has the city ever had a citywide safety program?
I'm not, I'm not aware of one in the last ten years. We've had isolated programs within departments, rarely. As Bob mentioned, there are two that exist today. But as a, from a citywide perspective, not that I'm aware of.
Now, every, every department still has some of their own, like fire and police still have their own safety programs, very specific to those uniquely. Then IPL has one, the, I'm not sure where the other individual, is he out of waterworks?
Municipal services.
Municipal services, thank you very much. So other departments have them. But I think collectively, I think just the sharing of ideas is going to be important.
Is that kind of uncommon for a city of our size not to have a citywide one?
In my opinion, the cities I work with, they all do.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember McCandless, you have your, your camera on, so I didn't know if you wanted to talk.
Thank you. Mr. Charlesworth, could you tell me, just help people understand why you could possibly have a workman's comp claim that's twenty years old and, and why they aren't just taken care of in the year that they occur?
Well, some of it has to do with legal decisions. Most of the ones that are that old have to do with continued care for a paraplegic or quadriplegic. Some have to do with just continued medical care. They don't want to close the books because once they close the books, they might not have enough money for their medical care down the road.
Very good. Thank you very much.
We actually call that a legacy claim in when we look at the budget. And so that's just a FYI.
Thank you. Anything else, Councilmember McCandless?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, other questions? Please proceed.
Bob, what's, do you do like a two-year, three-year, five-year outlook to see what, how that's going to affect, using us as a city as the example, how that out, that stretch out forward-thinking look will affect us? Or are you even able to do that with your industry?
Oh, no, we've, we use AI, we use projections. Yeah, that's where I like, that's where I come in, where I foresee what claims are open, where I think they may end up, using the reserve philosophy from the third-party administrator, because they see the actual claims. But I use that in, in the budget projections of where I think the city needs to be financially. And, you know, unfortunately, I, I think it was last year, I got surprised. There were some claims that were settled and, which is great, but it was at levels that, you know, I wasn't ready to budget that. I didn't see, foresee that. So I'm not how to exactly answer your questions more specific than, yes, we do project going forward what we're looking at. And we, and we look at a, it's not like health insurance, you can't look at it as a per employee per month cost. It's more complicated than that.
I figured it was. I didn't know if you had a special magic ball you could help out with.
I'm here in forty years of gray hair, so yeah.
And we appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else, other questions before we move on? Okay. Hearing none?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charlesworth. All right, this brings us to the third agenda item, the Palmer Senior Center update.
And for yet another group presentation for the evening, Parks and Recreation Director Morris Heide and several members of his team are coming forward.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Morris Heide, Director of Parks and Recreation. We are very excited this evening to share some updates and information about the Palmer Senior Center. You know, I was sitting here, I was thinking about, many of you have had an opportunity over the last several years to come and visit the Palmer Center, take part in activities, help serve some of the meals, so give presentations and awards. So we really appreciate that. So, so this evening, this is kind of, this is going to be a team effort. We have several of our recreation services staff with us this evening and I'd like to introduce them, excuse me. Frank Burrow, Assistant Director of Recreation Services is here this evening. Cheryl DeHan, Recreation Services Supervisor, and Catherine Jo Chapel, Recreation Programming, Programmer, excuse me. So all of them are going to present part of the, do part of the presentation this evening. So I'm going to just give a brief overview and then turn it over to them. So Frank will be covering the background and operations for the Palmer Center. Cheryl DeHan will be talking about the Palmer Center services and community data. Catherine will be, Catherine Jo will be talking about the satisfaction survey. If you recall, back in January, I want to say January, February, Jo actually put together a survey, implemented the survey, and so she's going to talk about the, that survey. It was very impressive work there. So the survey results, the community suggestions and responses that came out of that survey, and then the community impact. And then Cheryl will also talk about the budget and vision for the Palmer Center. And then Frank is going to kind of close things out and all of us will be available for questions. So with that, I will turn things over to Frank Burrow.
Mayor, council, thank you for hearing us. Today, I want to talk about the, the overview of the Recreation Services Division. The Palmer Center is just one of those services, but as I'm sure all of you that you know, but I want to make sure those at home also have that chance to hear. We have George Owens Nature Park and DeWitt Center, the Sermon, Roger T. Sermon Community Center, the Truman Memorial Building, which houses the National Frontier Trails Museum, the Veterans Hall and Veterans Memorial, the Uptown Market that is famously putting on, the Farmer's Market that just started Wednesdays as well as Saturdays this month, the athletic complex, Independence Athletic Complex that has a number of sports fields, opportunities there, and then courts and fields, pavilions, shelters, all those sorts of things. So all of those are part of what we do. But the Palmer Center is here, what we're here to talk about today. The Palmer Center is a community center for individuals sixty years and older and those with registered disabilities. So that is quite a variety of programming that they do. It's been located at the current location since two thousand and four, but since nineteen ninety-three, before that, it was housed at the Roger T. Sermon Center, providing the lunch program and meals and programming at that location. The Palmer Center's mission is to encourage the well-being of older adults and independents. Now, the older adults and the well-being is quite a impactful discussion. Anything from the physical activities, programming that they do, the socialization that happens, and also the nutrition and sometimes spiritual needs that people have, they're able to engage in at that facility. So while we do not own the facility itself, we do lease it. We have a thirty-year lease and then there's extensions that we can. The Palmer Place Apartments is who the city releases that from, but we are still obligated for the maintenance and upkeep of those properties. So with that said, I want to introduce you to Cheryl DeHan, the Recreation Services Supervisor Three, a certified, now part recreation professional. She just got her certification, which some of you may have been informed of. So with that, I want to introduce you to Cheryl.
Thank you. I appreciate you letting us share today. I'm going to give an overview of some of the services that we offer. We offer a variety of diverse and current and quality enrichment activities for lifelong learning and enjoyment. And like Morris and Frank had mentioned, the, the social aspect and just all the different dimensions of wellness. Our programs range from off-site trips to evidence-based health classes to art groups- Our programs range from off-site trips to evidence-based health classes, to art groups, to volunteering, and everything in between. Through our grant funding partnership that we have with Mid-America Regional Council, we're required to offer a variety of things, including daily lunch Monday through Friday, and then educational classes, including technology, education sessions, expressive and creative arts programs, leaderships, civic engagement, community development programs, support groups, diversity, equity, inclusion programs, nutrition education, evidence-based programs, health and fitness programs, and then the volunteer program.
I don't know if you want to push the next slide forward. Are you on the next slide, or are you talking about that one, or did I jump you ahead?
Not quite yet.
Okay, sorry.
I'm, I'm ready for it now, though.
Okay, perfect.
So in meeting the requirements with Mid-America Regional Council, and then to help fulfill our mission and serve the community, this and the next slide both show just an array of the programs that we offer. I'm not going to read all of them, but I'll highlight just a few. In our fitness and wellness, we do offer open-play pickleball on Tuesdays and Thursdays, as well as drop-in pickleball on Mondays and Fridays. We have a variety of fitness classes and different fitness opportunities. We have memberships to some clubs and activities, as well as our fitness room. And so we do get some revenue from memberships and classes, which was $18,876 in 2024, in addition to over $26,000 from Silver Sneakers and Renew Active member visits that we get in reimbursements for each visit from those members. Then we provide evidence-based programs like Tai Chi for arthritis four times a year, chronic disease health management, living a healthy life with chronic pain, and we do get reimbursed for those classes by Mid-America Regional Council. We have nutrition and education presentations each month, health screenings such as blood pressure checks and blood sugar checks, and then a number of special events throughout the year. Our largest each year is the Christmas and Holiday Party. In December of last year, we had 214 guests attend, and then over 50 volunteers who helped serve food or provide entertainment for the event, and want to give a special thank you to the council members and mayor who supported that event and came and helped serve at it. Our travel program is also popular, where we go on day trips to places like New Theater, Jamesport, Missouri, Bentonville, Arkansas, overnight trip to Branson. There is a charge for those trips with the goal of 100% cost recovery for the day trips. And then for our nutrition site and some of those related programs, we have a dedicated group of volunteers. In 2024, we had 74 volunteers serve more than 7,000 hours of their time. We had two volunteers in particular who donated more than 900 hours each. We had Rosa at 924 hours and Helen with 968 hours. So we would not be able to operate our program, at least at the level that we do, without our wonderful volunteers that we have. Our volunteers also run some of our popular programs, like our Open Music Jam that we have every week, where around 10 to 12 musicians bring their instruments, play for two hours, and then community members come and listen and dance and enjoy themselves. And then we have volunteers that support other programs, for example, calling bingo, leading the chatterbox art group, and more. For our nutrition site, that is one of our largest programs that we offer, and it is funded through Mid-America Regional Council and ensures a nutritionally balanced lunch is available to community members Monday through Friday. Also as part of that, though, we do deliver frozen, home-delivered meals to people who are homebound. The lunches that are served on-site are catered by Don Bosco Center, and there is a suggested donation of $3 for people over 60 or who are 18 to 59 with a disability, but it is a donation, it's not required because we don't want to exclude anyone who can't afford to pay. And so the donation average is actually $1.16 per meal. For those who are under 60 or not disabled, there is a $7 fee for those who would like to purchase a lunch. And then in addition to our lunches, we also partner with Harvesters, and we distribute boxes of supplemental food items as well for older adults. So in 2024, we served 16,628 lunches on-site. That averages out to 69 people per meal. We delivered 11,550 frozen meals to homebound seniors, and we distributed 305 supplemental food boxes. And just kind of comparison, in February of 2020, which was the last full month we had before the pandemic, we were averaging 56 people per day for lunch, so increasing up now to 69. We've, we've had some definite growth over the years, which when we first came back from the pandemic in August of '21, the first full month back, we had an average of 39 people. So we've been able to really build back up since that time. We have two full-time staff members who are dedicated to the nutrition site program. We have Rick Davis as our nutrition site aide who runs the kitchen and makes the meal deliveries to the homebound seniors, and then we have Joe Chapel, our Recreation Programmer, who handles a lot of reporting, the daily announcements and programming. So some more statistics, in 2024, we offered 1,625 programs and had more than 50,000 sign-ins for these programs and facility usage. Now, a number of community members who come for one program will also sign for additional programs that day. So for example, one of our PEPY exercise class participants then also signed in for blood pressure checks and blood sugar checks, and then lunch that day. So the 53,000 isn't unique participants, but sign-ins for each, for the different programs that we offer. Another thing that we do is we have reassurance phone calls, which are made by our part-time staff and some of our volunteers, where we call homebound seniors or seniors who have just asked for a regular phone call to check in on them and make sure they're doing okay. And we can also during those phone calls offer resources and referrals if needed. So I am going to now hand it off to Jo, who will give a review of our Satisfaction Survey that we recently did, and then I'll come back and talk about budget.
Hello, everybody. Thank you very much for having us here today. My name is Jo, I am the Recreation Programmer over at the Palmer Center, and I joined the team back in November of 2024. Raise your hand, please, councilmembers, if you would, if you enjoy being very informed when joining a program or learning about a new project. Okay, yes, number of hands going up, me too. So when I joined the Palmer Center, I really wanted to get my hands into knowing what the community members needed, wanted, and enjoyed at the Palmer Center. And at the Palmer Center, we do an annual Satisfaction Survey. So that's what I did, I formed that and we, we sent it out. It was a lengthy survey of 43 questions. Yes, I know, that's a lot. 21 Likert Scale questions, 14 open-ended questions, two yes or no, and six multiple-choice questions. We collected these responses and surveys over the span of a month and received 45 submissions of completed or complete-ish surveys. We found that 86% of people are satisfied with our programs. 82.5% are satisfied with our daily lunch. As with any survey, you're going to have people submit some answers that maybe they don't fully mean. For example, we had some people say they never tried our lunch, but they don't like it. So, you know, some skewed results. We also found that 89.9% of people are satisfied with the facility and shared ways we could improve it as well. 87.6% of people are satisfied with our customer service. 85.7% of people have been members for over a year at the Palmer Center, and 71.4% of people come to the center more than two times a week, which is pretty amazing. Because the Satisfaction Survey was so lengthy, we have decided to do some adjusting. So in June, later on this month, we will be sending out another Satisfaction Survey that is significantly shorter, and then in December, we are breaking out the suggestion point of the survey and having that available to community members in the end or middle of December with availability to submit their answers by January. There were a number of suggestions to the surveys of ways we could improve the Palmer Center, things that the community members would like to see changed. So we obviously received a lengthy list of suggestions, and we've already acted on some of those. So as you can see in the photos, one of the suggestions was a request for blackout curtains in the gymnasium, so there wouldn't be a glare from the sunshine while pickleballers were playing, and we added those to the gym. We also had a request of returning our monthly karaoke sessions, which we have added before our birthday lunch, which is the final Friday of the, yeah, the final Friday of the month from 10:30 a.m. to 11:15. If any of you would like to come belt a song, please join us. Next one's going to be the last Friday of June. We also added some new programming, so this example is a coffee and guided chat program. So we have a partner come in and bring in pastries, and we have selected questions to help our community members get to meet each other or get to know each other on a deeper level. And then we also had a request for new bingo calling supplies because we've used our bingo supplies so much that some of the numbers have faded. So these are just some of the suggestions. We have a much larger list of things that we would like to implement and change at the Palmer Center at the request of our community members, and Cheryl will be talking about that in our vision. I also want to share the impact. So we asked, we asked folks at the Palmer Center how the Palmer Center has affected their lives. A repeated theme was the importance of fellowship and having friends and socializing. As you can see, 98% of respondents answered the question, "How has your involvement with the Palmer Center affected your life?", as having allowed them to make new friends. 90% said that this has provided a social outlet for them. 80% said that it gives them something to look forward to when they wake up. For example, we just had an intern, and through the program, they were encouraged to create their own program, they named it Feline Friends Fest. They invited the animal shelter to come and bring some kittens, and one of the community members shared with me that he was so excited to wake up that morning because he knew he would get to play with some kittens, which is amazing and delightful, as you could probably guess. We've also had community members share how important the Palmer Center is, not just through shared words, but also action. One of our regular community members and a dedicated volunteer decided to move closer to the Palmer Center when she realized that the bus route wasn't going to be existing that would get her there, so she moved closer so that she could come in, and she comes in pretty much every day, helps volunteer in our kitchen, prep for our daily lunch, and socialize, and also participate in some of our other programming as well. I want to speak a little bit to the importance of the social impact that the Palmer Center has. I attended the annual Age Positive Conference last month, which is hosted by the Mid-America Regional Council, and one of the sessions focused specifically on the impacts of isolation on physical and mental health. So studies shown that loneliness causes significant, significant mental and physical effects like cognitive decline, a likeliness to develop Alzheimer's, 32% increase in likeliness of stroke, 17% increase to type 2 diabetes, and increase in inflammation, and 26% increase in earlier death. So not only are we helping 80% of our respondents improve and maintain their physical health through things like exercise programs and access to our fitness room, and not only are we helping 53% of our respondents improve their healthy eating, but we are also improving the physical and mental health of these individuals because we give them a space where they can bond and connect with their peers. We do all of that with a fairly small team, as you've seen, and a very large group of volunteers, and with the budget that we have. I'm going to pass it back to Cheryl so she can speak more to those numbers.
Thanks, Jo. For our budget, some of the statistics we've been giving you have been from 2024, but the budget does run on the fiscal year, and so this information is for the 24-25 fiscal year. During this fiscal year, we've had a budget of $538,371. About 76% of that is funded by the park sales tax fund. Then up to 16% is funded through Mid-America Regional Council, and including that is $33,000 per year we get for being at the gold level, which is their highest level that they have of, of three levels. About 2% comes from the Community Development Block Grant, and then about 5% from our Silver Sneakers and Renew Active memberships. Our funding has changed over time, and we know that it will continue to change. When I started with the city in 2017, there was a dedicated part of the general fund that was allocated to our services. At one point, when I was first here, we were open Monday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., then Friday, 8:00 to 5:00, and Saturday, 11:00 to 5:00, for a total of 59 hours per week. We scaled back in 2020 due to COVID, first being open from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, Monday through Thursday, and then 8:00 to 5:00 on Friday. And now we're open 8:00 to 5:00 Monday through Friday for a total of 45 hours a week. So we have reduced the hours some with the budget considerations. So we're no longer currently open on Saturdays unless there's a pickle court or other rental. A couple weeks ago, Jo and I attended a meeting at Mid-America Regional Council, and we learned that there could be some funding changes there as well, due to the Older American Act funding, which has remained fairly flat. There was a spike during COVID, but that extra COVID funding has now gone away, and that Older American Act funding has not kept up with inflation. So this means that for the first time, we may, they may be potentially having a cap on our meals for daily lunches, which we've not had in the past. We don't know for sure if that will happen, but they've mentioned that that's a possibility that could be coming. We have received our contract renewal letter from Mid-America Regional Council for the 25-26 fiscal year, and we will receive the $33,000 again for being a gold level from the nutrition site, and we will get similar reimbursement rates for site transportation and meal deliveries as far as each meal that's delivered, but our cap for the overall maximum that we could receive for the year has been reduced to $20,000 for next year instead of the $26,642 we had this fiscal year. We've also received a response to our Community Development Block Grant application indicating that we'll receive $13,000 in funding from that source for the 25-26 fiscal year. So for our vision and our hope for the future, the items listed here did come from the survey that we did, and so with that, we are hoping to offer extended pickleball, additional pickleball hours, and more pickleball tournaments. We are wanting to offer more weights and floor mats in the gym and install handrails in our hallway, and then extend facility hours and weekend hours, and I believe we are looking at adding some Saturday hours back in next year. And then we would like to keep our costs and yearly rates affordable since the, most of the people who come to Palmer Center are fixed income, many are low income, and we feel like the services are such a benefit, as Jo pointed out, some of that impact, we want to make sure that cost is not. We want to make sure that cost is not keeping people from being able to come. And then we would like to offer caregiver and grief support groups as well. Based on the 2023 census data, we know that twenty-eight percent of the individuals in Independence, Missouri are sixty years or older, meaning that even though we feel like we're having a big impact and reaching a lot of people, we're still only reaching a small percentage of people that we could in the community. And so while our vision speaks to changes we would like to see made on a smaller scale, our long-term goal is to be able to serve a larger percent of our community to make an even bigger impact. So I would like to invite any of you, if you would like to come see our work or vision in practice, to come by and shadow us for a couple hours, half a day, a whole day. We would love to host you and have you come and just shadow us for a while. So I'm going to turn it over to Frank for closing, and then we'll be available for questions.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Can we say wow? The idea of what these ladies have demonstrated is a lot of statistics, but what we're really talking about is the way that they are impacting and changing lives. They are not only improving the quality of life of our community, one person at a time, one heart at a time, but they are also making a difference for families, the grandparents, the grandkids, the relationships, those caregivers and middle-aged folks taking care of families from young and old together. There is quite an impact there. So in review, looking at all the things that they said, the statistics are something that we need to track to show our effectiveness and to prove where our dollars are spent and the staff time is being effective. But more importantly is how it's changing the hearts of the individual and how they actually are having an impact day-to-day, person-to-person, face-to-face is the biggest impact that I would like you to take from this. So in review, we've discussed the background of the operations, the Palmer Center services, which are aplenty, and with a small amount of time that we had to share that, they demonstrated quite a few. The annual satisfaction survey is primarily positive across the board and the budget vision that we have. So with that, I thank you. Thank you for your time and open it up for questions for our team.
Very good. Thank you, Frank. Anyone, any questions for anyone from the Palmer Center or Parks and Rec who work at the Palmer Center? Here, anyone? Well, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I have been there to play pickleball. I just wanted to know, did you guys set somebody up that was really good because they beat me the first time? So I just wanted to see if that was the case. But anyway, but it was great fun and a great group of people there and continued success. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, as a supervisor of that area, have to applaud the staff and the effort and the care that they put into each person that they engage with. So much credit to them.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right. Next thing on the agenda is short-term rentals.
And Community Development Director Tom Skinnell is making his way forward to give the last presentation of the evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tom Skinnell. I'm the Community Development Director. I'm going to give a little overview on the city's short-term rentals, or as I like to say, STRs, short for short-term rentals. I do want to start, so I'm going to give you an overview of what the existing regulation and process is. In a couple weeks, the council will be receiving a presentation from the FIFA Committee. My understanding is there may be some recommendations coming out of that that may affect short-term rentals. So again, I'm just covering what the city currently enforces. So a little bit of background, the city's short-term rentals, we added those, those regulations back in November of 2018. That was after probably about a year-long research and conversation with hotels and operators that were operating within, within the city. About a year later, the city made a couple amendments to add some additional regulations in regards to STRs. Fast forward just a couple more years to 2022, and at that time, the landscape had has changed a little bit. And so the city council put in place a short temporary moratorium on the processing of short-term rentals. I believe it was for six months long, but we were able to complete the research, and the council was able to pass the updated short-term regulations in less than that time. So switching gears a little bit, city has a great deal, number of regulations pertaining to short-term rentals. I believe I have four or five slides here. I'm not going to read them all off, but just to hit some of the highlights, we did put in, in place a number of years ago, the five-hundred-foot separation requirement between STRs. That was, that was to prevent the concentration of short-term rentals within, within the neighborhood. Things like prohibiting large events, banquets, those types of things, prevent those multiple bookings, things like that. Also clarify that short-term rentals could not be transferred. If one was sold, the new owner would have to go through and seek approval for that short-term rental a second time.
And what do you mean prohibit multiple bookings?
So that is, the city's regulations require the entire unit to be booked out by one entity. So if you're a family and you're traveling, you're renting out that, that unit as a, as a whole. What this put in place was, is that you don't have multiple parties there, you know, two different fam, two different families who don't know each other staying in, in the same thing. Those tend to cause issues, so we just thought it was easier just to, to not allow those.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, continuing on with the regulations, we do have the requirement of the posting of the Good Neighbor Guidelines. We also put in place a continuous noise monitoring device that essentially located, clarified that parking's only allowed on hard surface materials, outlined that a trash disposal plan's required, put in place the violation penalty enforcement provisions, outlines the STR revocation process. Again, just keep going on. Limits the number of guests in guest rooms within, within a short-term rental. Also specified that a short-term rental cannot be rented more than twice in a twenty-four-hour period. That's something that we have in our hotels, that's to prevent the hourly booking of the short, short-term rentals. Prohibits the individual rooms of short-term rentals from being rented out. Again, these are all things that through our research back in twenty-two and twenty-three that were best practices throughout communities across the United States. Lastly, we also, and have had, a life safety plan so that the guests, when they are in a home, they, they know how to get out in case of an emergency. Any type of short-term rental does go through a city review. The application is, is made. The Community Development Department routes that to the various departments. It gets reviewed by those departments to ensure that the short-term rental is in compliance with the applicable codes, and that all of that is, that review is done before being placed on the planning commission agenda. Also prior to the planning commission agenda, the owner of the STR sends a notice out to the surrounding property owners within a hundred and eighty-five feet identifying when that planning commission hearing is. There's also the public hearing notice sign that is placed in the property, and the planning commission holds that, that public hearing. Planning commission reviews that. They have three options there: approve the application, approve the application with conditions, or they can recommend to not approve the, the application. City council and, city council has seen a few short-term rentals, and you, you see those whenever there is a legal protest that's associated with a short-term rental, or if the applicant decides to appeal the planning commission's decision to the city council. So after the decision by the city, whether that's the planning commission or the city council, there's another process, and that's the business license process. That's an administrative process. Again, the applicant submits their business license to the city, the relevant departments review that, the inspections are performed, business licenses issued. When the business license is renewed, our ordinances require that those units get inspected per the rental-ready regulations. That was something that was put in place a number of years ago. That is to ensure that these units, as they're being rented out, meet those standards that the city put in place. Some safeguards that, that the city also has is the business license and administrative hearing process. So if we do, if we do have a short-term rental that operates outside the bounds, the city does have a, a process that we can use to take action. Switching gears a little bit, so the city also utilizes Rentalscape, which is a data science platform. Essentially, it's AI that goes out on several different booking sites. I believe it's about a dozen now, and searches for, searches those sites to see where short-term rentals are being operated. It identifies the, the address and also provides a platform for the city. We actually use Rentalscape for several different services. Again, the property identification, the monitoring and reporting. The picture there on the slide shows some of the data that, that we can get for a particular property. Outreach campaign, so if there is a short-term rental that is operating and it doesn't have a business license, Rentalscape has a letter that they send on the city's behalf to, to inform them there is a process you must go, go through before you, you operate that. Short-term rentals, they register through the portal that Rentalscape has set up. Rentals, these are STRs, can also remit their transient guest tax back to the city, and then they also operate the complaint hotline, which is manned twenty-four, seven. So how many short-term rentals do we have in the city? We have ninety-two. We have a little over fifty-five thousand total housing units, which equals about zero-point-one-seven percent of our housing stocks are being used as short-term rentals, so a very, very small percentage. Majority of the STRs are located close to the stadiums as well as the historic sites. So this here shows the concentration of where the short-term rentals are located. You can see majority of them are located west of Nolan Road, and then some more of that group around the Historic Square. That concludes my presentation and available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Skinnell. Want any questions? Councilman McCandless, please proceed.
Thank you very much. You know, one of the concerns we heard early on was that they were going to take all the housing stock, and certainly with the very few that we have, I think we can lay that concern to rest. But the other concern that people had was that they would be party houses and that they would generate huge number of visits from the police. That was one of our disqualifiers. If they had a certain number of visits from the police, then their license would come up for consideration. Has that happened to any of these? Do you know that we're having any issues with a lot of police complaints?
To my knowledge, we, we are, are not. And with our, working closely with the police department on a number of other troublesome businesses, the short-term rental discussion has not come, come up as being an issue or having a particular issue at a certain property.
My next question is, it seemed like we had a number of these come forward, and then after we added additional restrictions, it seems like we have not had a lot of new applications. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes. Yeah, and that would be attributed to a couple years ago when the city first signed up for Rentalscape. And again, that's the platform that found these, did that outreach camp, campaign, and that is the reason why we saw that big influx of applicants that, that came through back in twenty-three and parts of twenty-four.
So I, I just want to be sure that we didn't put so many restrictions that no one ever wants to open an Airbnb or a short-term sent site here in Independence. I, I've talked to a couple of developers who have said they had some concerns about our process and that they were no longer looking at doing business in Independence. So I just want us to kind of keep that in mind as we evaluate these processes now that we've had a year under our belt to kind of live with them. So thank you very much.
Thank you, council member. Anyone else have further questions? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Skinnell. I appreciate it very much. The next thing on the agenda is for the Madam State Clerk, give us a report on the boards and commissions, please.
A recommendation has been made to appoint Nedra Jeffress to the Truman Memorial Scholarship Committee. A recommendation has been made to appoint Tony Summer as a regular member of the Board of Adjustment. A recommendation has been made to appoint Cody Atkinson to the Animal Welfare Committee. A recommendation has been made to appoint Pam Washon to the Street Improvement Oversight Committee. A recommendation has been made to reappoint Lori Dean Wiley to the Planning Commission, and a recommendation has been made to appoint Cindy Culp to the Board of Building and Engineering Appeals. Staff requests direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting, appointing these individuals to those boards.
Thank you very much. And, Ms. Reynolds, anything that you would like to say before we wrap up this evening and call this meeting adjourned?
Nothing for this evening. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.